We are back in session and will now proceed to our committee reports or remind committee chairs and the audience that all voting on consent in any item requiring action will be done at the end of the agenda via roll call vote. We'll begin with our Government and Community Affairs Committee chaired by Mr. Wendell Hall. Mr. Hall?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good morning to all who assembled this morning for this meeting. My name is Wendell Hall. I chair the Government and Community Affairs Committee along with Jill Conitz. This morning, we will have an update to the action and works of the committee. That update will be given by Mr. McKinney and Julie Pittman concerning the future and the things that we're involved in as far as providing directions for the whole child development from the State Board perspective. At this point in time, I will ask Mr. McKinney, is he on line?
I'm in the room, sir.
It's all yours, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Hall. Good morning, Chair Davis, Superintendent Truitt, Vice Chair Duncan, Lieutenant Governor Robinson, Treasurer Falwell, board members and advisors, our colleagues here at the State Board and DPI, and our colleagues across this great state of the Shire. We wanted to start today by acknowledging the beginning of a new year, one of many possible resolutions and rebirths, but also a continuing commitment to transcending the impact of COVID on our students and their learning and their lives. We want to thank our districts, our communities, our schools, our leaders, our families, and our teachers, as well as our students. And may your resolve stay strong and your hope burn bright, for this is your story and you are the heroes. We wanted to begin this morning by giving just a brief glimpse at how many of the initiatives and strategy that this committee is focused on align to the strategic plan and the implementation. If you see here on Goal Three, Increasing Educated Preparedness to Meet the Needs of Every Student, each one of these particular strategies aligns to many of the different groups, organizations, and stakeholders that we're partnering with. And increasing the number of qualified and well-prepared educators in every school, we continue to work with NCAP. We continue to work with specific Grow Your Own Teacher programs like JOCO Teach. We're looking at Teacher Cadet Programs and Teaching as a Profession, as well as EPP, Community College, and IET partnerships. One of the particular groups that we're working on in increasing opportunities for educator engagement was recently spoken about by Superintendent Truitt and the North Carolina Teacher Council that Julie Pittman, Maureen Stover, and Eugenia Floyd lead, as well as looking at teacher leadership academies like we worked with in JOCO again. Increasing the diversity of the teaching workforce, we will share a little bit about NC Stride today, the Drive Task Force, working with GTAC and as well as Profound Ladies. And strengthening relationships between EPPs and districts. Elevate Ed NC with the Hunt Institute will commence this upcoming week in Memphis, Tennessee, and there are multiple members of the department that will be there supporting that. And work with our lab schools will share out an upcoming visit to CTEC, as well as Middle Fork and Forsyth County. And lastly, increasing the number of mentors available to beginning educators as we continue our partnership with the Human Capital Roundtable, Advanced Teaching Roles, and the New Teacher Support Program.
We also want to show the alignment with Operation Polaris and how those two documents and two implementations are working together to guide our work. We continue to collaborate in, well, we continue to work with the Human Capital Pipeline focus on Operation Polaris, collaborating with educational experts to identify competencies, skills, and appropriate process for measurement and development of a menu of competency skills for student learning, collaborating with the Pepsi subcommittees to reform human capital process, which you heard about yesterday, supporting initiatives like Teacher Cadet, Teaching as a Pathway, and similar programs, developing a comprehensive cohesive progression through the professional learning system that supports educators through their process of entering the profession and careers, partnering with districts, colleges, universities, and third parties to offer professional learning opportunities, working to support the transforming of licensure process, which you also heard about yesterday with Human Capital Roundtable work, and advocating for the transformation of compensation system for educators so that we know we're addressing the needs that our educators are bringing forth very loudly for us right now in terms of compensation and support throughout the system.
And these align with the three main priorities of this committee. Again, strengthening statewide support for that whole child work and student mental health and well-being, coordinating consolidating with our PCUs and statewide organizations with the focus of teacher recruitment and retention, and then building out those partnerships with our EPPs and our IETs, as well as our community colleges.
Skip to the next one. Just a brief overview that the committee asked that we talk about, the alignment that the AIM Conference was able to show us when we partnered with our district teams, as well as other stakeholders who came. We focused on whole child and SEL presentations, engagement and breakout groups, including adult social emotional needs and MTSS, whole child and competency-based grading and learning. We had a breakfast with No Kid Hungry and had several networking things that allowed our teachers to really be valued as professionals and engage in positive networking events. We have a strong focus on teacher recruitment and retention. You've heard about several of those partners, but also a real strong push from our Teachers of the Year and our Regional Teachers of the Year in how they are building out regional models for teacher leadership, teacher advisory councils, and engagement opportunities throughout their regions, and really beginning to build a more robust networking system in our region so that that can build backup for the superintendent's purpose of closing the feedback loop with teachers in the field. And then several things around policy that's going to lead into our first teacher summit, which we'll talk about in just a few minutes. We had lots of time to bring in lab schools and our EPP partnerships, and I've heard that we, they want that even more so next year and throughout this coming year. Our regional and charter workshops, which Superintendent Truitt talked about, how they were able to really work with and align their work with the State Board Strategic Plan and Operation Polaris. And then there's a link on here for you to look at at your leisure that really shows what we were able to do and how our students were really at the center of everything we were doing. We heard that echoed this morning with Dr. Beth Emery, that she has worked so hard and we all do because students are at the center of what we're doing. In thinking about that, when we are looking forward into the next year, we want to know who our students are and what we're doing to prepare them. We've heard Dr. Segal and several others talk about the portrait of a graduate. Who are those students that we're trying to graduate and what do we want them to know? And how do we do that? Well, it begins with a teacher. And so over the course of the next year in this committee, we will look at how teachers are leading in that and how we can better support our teachers so that they can better support our students. I think it's really important that we are building out robust systems of support for our teachers and our students. And one of the things that the committee has talked about is how we're able to also engage with our principals and our assistant principals, which you also heard about this morning from Superintendent Truitt's report, and how those principals and assistant principals are the catalysts for greatness and how we're able to better support our teachers.
We wanted to share a couple of the initiatives that are currently occurring statewide right now. We had the opportunity to work with the North Carolina Education Innovation Lab, the NC Stride Forward Stride, so looking at North Carolina's next steps in teacher recruitment, and again reflecting Superintendent Truitt's North Stars of a highly qualified excellent teacher in every classroom. The theme of this conference was that teachers have the greatest influence on student outcomes of all school factors, and so recruiting the next generation of teachers in North Carolina is going to be of the utmost importance. If you move to the next slide, we wanted to provide several resources for those who are not able to attend the conference. There are links down below that look at the landing page, the lab program, but also the Teacher Recruitment Action Plan. That action plan was articulated in several of the session topics, including looking at teacher vacancy data, looking at strategies to fill critical vacancies, strengthening the teacher pipeline, and then also again reiterating what was presented yesterday in yesterday's board presentations, Reimagining Licensor and the Pathways to Excellence for Teaching Profession, both Dr. Miller and Dr. Tom Tomerlin presented out there as well. So just a couple of resources, we feel like particularly the Teacher Recruitment Action Plan will show that many of the initiatives that the department and the board are focused on are in alignment here. The next initiative, Dr. Angie Mullenex, Kia Steff, and I attended a session at Duke Teach House, and this is an incredible partnership that we are working on, that we're in the preliminary steps here, but I did want to introduce a couple of the ideas. Duke Teach House is literally what it sounds like. It's a house built for teachers. It's across the street from an elementary school in Durham, North Carolina, connected to Duke University, and we were able to learn from one of their very own teachers, which in a few slides, you'll see a picture of her talking to us, named Michelle Saunders. And she is a beginning teacher in Durham Public Schools, and she tells us that there's so many systems within the larger system of education that it's very difficult for a beginning teacher to really wrap their heads around, you know, everything that's going on, from every, you know, their daily interactions with their students to the multiple layers of that system. And what Duke Teach House provides is a wraparound support for those beginning teachers, 1, 2, and 3s that participate in this program. She speaks of the fact that it works on kind of developing your own ed philosophy and looking at the teacher experience by organic PLCs and triage support and work-life balance and looking at professional development outside of what the school system provides that really expands the understanding of teachers and how they fit into the larger ecosystem. They talk about community engagement opportunities and then also teacher advancement and leadership. And so we were blown away, and if you look at the next few slides here, there are some logic models, and I wanted to point specifically to one, which is where this is really going and where Dr. Mullenex and our team are very excited about moving to, is Duke Teach House is really interested in looking at the replicable aspects of a partnership like this, you know? Where can we see partnerships in other universities and colleges and even community colleges across our state and building that bridge for that support for our teachers, particularly our beginning teachers? We're going to return to Buncombe County at the end of January to look at their essential educator housing initiative and really attempt to synergize and build upon what are replicable factors that look at both the model that's in Buncombe and maybe a Teach House model that our districts could really tap into and partnerships with our stakeholder organizations across the state build upon moving forward. If you look at the last slide, these are just some great pictures. You'll see Michelle in the upper left-hand corner presenting to our group, a picture of the house in and of itself. It's on 510 Holloway Street in Durham, North Carolina, and then a picture of one of the first cohorts during their pilot mode. They are in the fifth year of this now and have actually bought a house right next door to 510 Holloway Street that they're using for their pre-service teachers while they're going through the process of becoming an educator. So just a really unique opportunity we wanted to lift up preliminarily and cannot wait for Dr. Mullenex and the Promising Practice to come to fruition.
May I add, Mr. McKinney, if I'm correct, the teachers also receive a supplement or stipend during the time at the house, and the house itself is also a place for PD to occur in the evenings where they can gather among themselves and discuss what it is to become an educator. Am I correct with that?
You are absolutely right, Chair Hall. They receive a $6,500 stipend, and that table that you see us all at right there in the upper left-hand corner is literally their professional learning opportunity table. So they break bread there and they learn together.
Thank you.
We're really excited to announce that we will have the first Teacher Leadership Council Summit in February. The date actually on this slide is wrong. We've had to change the date, so the date is now February 27th and 28th. We will bring members of the Teacher Leadership Council to Raleigh over a day and a half to do professional development, look at advocacy, and what it means to be a teacher and how teachers can have a voice in re-professionalizing the profession of teaching and really get to know and understand all of the different stakeholders who are doing this work, because there are so many people who are doing the work of trying to advance teaching as a profession. And so our teachers are very interested in this, and it was from their voice that we birthed this opportunity. Excited to have Superintendent Truitt, who will be there with us that day, as well as several other people who will be in roundtable discussions with the teachers for them to really be in the room where it happens and create the space where it happens for them, really be able to give voice, and I'll be excited to report on that in March. If you look at the next slide, our committee focus for spring of 2022 is really to look at several things we've already begun, but also really fine-tune some of those things, looking at promising practices and what Mr. Ford calls pockets of promise, where we can find those pockets of promising practices across the state, district models serving whole school, whole community, and whole child in partnership with that committee's work, EPP partnerships. We are going to be visiting several lab schools, teacher prep programs, and looking at teacher recruitment initiatives, pipeline initiatives and support, teacher input and feedback. We will be focusing over the next six months, having regional teacher talks in each of the eight educational regions and among our charter schools and other school systems, and then teacher leadership partnerships, where we're looking at developing fellowships, regional models, EPP support, and district initiatives that are really advancing the role of the teacher and how the teacher can really lead from where they are and lead the profession from the classroom.
One of the specific lab schools that we will be visiting at the end of January is CTEC. We actually heard about this school a while ago, and it was, they made a presentation at NC Stride, and we felt like what they are doing down there greatly aligns with the work of this committee, as well as the strategic plan in Operation Polaris. If you move to the next slide, there's some data for their statistics for their school. But CTEC is literally a teacher early college for our high school students, and it really is to provide access to college classwork, particularly a focus on first-gen college students and economically disadvantaged students, so opportunities for them to join our workforce. So we're really excited to go down and learn from Principal Leach. There's going to be several other meetings that we'll have down there at UNCC to strengthen the partnership with Cato College of Education down there. So we're excited to be able to present what we learned down there in the February meeting. And then lastly, we just wanted to reiterate, and Superintendent Truitt kind of charged us, we wanted to make sure we got out in the field and visited some of our Blue Ribbon Schools to listen and learn, you know, what is it that makes these schools so extraordinary, as Dr. Hemphill was referring earlier, to be able to, you know, to have those qualifications that would lift them up. And there are eight schools in our state. We were able in kind of two mini journeys, visit Elkin Middle School, Brush Creek Elementary School, Blue Ridge Elementary School, and Sally B. Howard Charter School. So just wanted to lift up their leadership there. Very excited, just in these pictures right here, Dr. Issa Cox, the Superintendent of Ash County Schools, and Principal Loudon, excuse me, Dr. Will Hoffman, the Superintendent of Madison County Schools, and Principal Jackson, and Dr. Meyer Cox, the Superintendent of Elkin City Schools, and Principal Burton. We also typically invite legislators, and we're really blessed to have Representative Mark Pless join us in Madison County, again, to bridge our partnerships with the North Carolina General Assembly. And just, we're going to follow up with a couple of these schools as we look at, you know, that menu of replicable aspects, whether it's a program, whether it's, you know, several initiatives or strategies that we can put together and say, we found that these were synonymous across the board with these schools, and these may be things that we can focus on moving forward as we look to support our schools across the state. And with that, we will end our presentation, and please, if you have any questions, comments, we welcome them. Thank you.
Any questions?
Chair Hall, this is Olivia.
Yes.
Thank you. Fine presentation, as always. I want to wind back several frames to, I picked up on the point, critical vacancies. That was early in the presentation. My question has to do with, are we doing anything strategic around studying where these, the types of vacancies we're talking about? The first one that comes to mind would be mathematics, and part of the strategy could be what are we doing to begin resolving and filling those voids? That would be selective recruiting, I suppose, but we would probably need to know, what do we mean by critical vacancy?
Greatly appreciate that question, and that was particularly what the session topic was on, is, you know, A, identifying what filling critical vacancies are, defining what a critical vacancy is, and what our committee's goal is now is to take the information that we learned, particularly in that session, and then work with the department, and A, does this align with our thoughts on that? And moving forward, you know, what can we do as a department in implementing strategies and support our districts in fulfilling these critical vacancies? So that is absolutely on our docket moving forward with this committee.
Good to know. Thank you, Chair Hall.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Chair Hall, this is Catherine.
Yes.
So just a comment, I wanted to let the board know that it was on this visit out west right before Christmas, these pictures that you were seeing in the slide before, that we had, those of us on the visit had the opportunity to see NC EdCor in action. We were able to observe Mrs. Amanda Clark Miller, who is an NC EdCor tutor, work with a group of elementary schools who had been identified as having significant learning gaps in reading and math, and we got to see her work with some students, and I cannot tell you how thankful the teachers were to have Ms. Clark Miller working with these students, and the students love going to see this woman, which makes it all the better. So Ash County School is just a really good example of leveraging all that NC EdCor has to offer.
Thank you so much, Madam Superintendent, for those comments. I also want to say, oh, I'm sorry. Jill, do you have any comments?
No, thanks, Wendell. I'm good.
Okay. But the Teacher House in Durham is a little bit different from what I've known them to be in the past, and I'm really excited about that possibility. But also the Teacher Cadet Program, hopefully we can get that up and operating effectively and efficiently in the future. But this, but we have to find innovative ways to not only recruit, but to retain our staff members, and this is what it's all about. And I want to thank the committee members for the hard work you do from month to month and traveling across this state to identify these, what did I hear, probably go, pockets of success?
Pockets of promise.
Pockets of promise. That's a new one for me. I'm going to take that from Brother Ford.
That's right.
Because we have a lot of them. We have a lot of them out there. And I want to thank the committee for your hard work and putting it all together on a monthly basis. Any other questions?
And Chair Hall, to that comment real briefly, and you'll be getting an email, we just kind of got this all together in the last 48 hours, but we'll be going to Elizabeth City State University and working with Elizabeth City Pasquetank with their Teacher Cadet Program in late February, so really looking at that pathway and that success that they've had. They actually had a Elizabeth City State graduate return back to EC Pasquetank and work and is now their Teacher Cadet teacher. So we're just going to go listen and learn from her and figure out, again, some replicable strategies there that we can share. So just put that on your radar, sir.
Thank you so much for that. Mr. Chairman, I don't hear any other comments or hands up, so I'll give it back to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. I now recognize Dr. Oxendine for the Educator Standards and Practice Committee Report. Dr. Oxendine?
Olivia needs to unmute. I'm so sorry. Let me go back. Thank you, Chair Davis. This is Olivia Oxendine. I have the honor of chairing the ESMP Committee of the State Board, and sharing that leadership role with me is Ms. Amy White. I'm going to quickly go through the items that were presented and discussed fully yesterday. The first item is a new business item, one, the North Carolina Pathways to Excellence for the Teaching Profession. We had a fine presentation by Doctors Tomberlin and Miller. Dr. Miller chairs the Pepsi Commission, and he is leading the charge in that with regard to the redesign of the North Carolina Teacher Licensor Model. The work of the design work is now parlayed to four subcommittees of Pepsi. We heard a little bit about the work and the leadership of those committees yesterday. That information, I will spare you going through the details, but all of the details are in the PowerPoint presentation. We know from the presentation yesterday that the work is intense, it is very collaborative, and that's what makes it, what really makes it innovative. We also, the model is still in kind of a theoretical mode, we know that. We saw the theoretical framework from the PowerPoint yesterday, and we heard in, kind of in a nutshell, what happens along the continuum in terms of performance evaluations, making decisions about performance to get from one part of the continuum to the next, and also what occurs in terms of salary adjustments along the continuum. The questions that were raised had to do with removing subjectivity in the evaluation of teachers along the continuum. How do we mitigate that? Do we bring in a third party? Does the whole subject of subjectivity and how to deal with that, how to remove that if it's ever possible? Will that require a lot of training of principals and HR directors and others? So that was a very pertinent question that was raised, and we heard a little bit of discussion about what could be done. I would imagine that discussion will be unfolded more at the subcommittee level of Pepsi. We also heard questions around, a question or a topic came up pertinent to the shortage of teachers, and we can talk forever about that, the shortage of teachers and the extent to which this model, we hope, will not exacerbate the shortage. In other words, would a principal be inclined to avoid having, you know, the heartburn of filling a vacancy? Could the principal be inclined to maybe not be as rigorous in the evaluation of the teacher when that kind of rigor would be necessary? So those are the kind of tedious questions that will be furthered in discussion at the subcommittee level. So the good thing, all of it was good, every bit of it was good, but we can look forward all of it was good, every bit of it was good. But we can look forward to bi-monthly meetings, hearing more from Dr. Tomberlin and Dr. Miller every two months as the work continues, as more of the nuance becomes less nuanced and more concrete. So that was a very good presentation yesterday. The next new business item deals with, dealt with a TWCS administration, which is going to be kicked off on March 1. Mr. Alessandro Montanari led the presentation, and he was joined by Ms. Stephanie Benedict, who is a partner, I don't have the name of the company, but is partnering with the DPI in the administration and probably the evaluation and the disaggregation and the technical pieces of sharing and presenting the data on the dashboard. Lots of exciting things coming out of that. The social media piece is thrilling, the various levels of prizes equally thrilling. So this is a big deal. I mean, this TWCS is in its 11th iteration. It came into being in 2002. In 2006, it became the model, the system, the entire system became part of the General Assembly, the permanent budget of the General Assembly. So it really has taken on an interesting life of its own. Last year, because of the pandemic, of course, that affected the response rate. That rate was 84.5. Responses came, were returned, or submitted, or entered into the system from over 100,000 educators. The highest response rate to date is 91%. And of course, you know, we're going to excel that this go-round. So again, March 1 kicks off the TWCS across the great state of North Carolina. The next item is an action item. ESMP 1 is the first item for action. The School Mental Health Clinician Position is ready to go. We will vote on that later this morning. This is an amendment to EVAL 001 in the Non-Certified Employee Manual. School Health Mental Clinician Position, I'm thrilled about this addition to the cadre of employment classifications in the North, to the North Carolina Public School System. The information in the manual is, some would say, well, how can you get excited about reading an employee manual? But I did, actually. It lays out the job description, it goes into clear detail around the necessary credentials. And the point about this item that we focused on, probably more squarely, had to do with the salary. So at first, a couple, maybe three months ago, we looked at a $56,000 annual salary. After some debate, discussions, input from the field, we revised that to a monthly salary range of about, I think it's somewhere a little bit over 3,000 to, max is at 6,000 on a monthly basis. So that one's good to go later today. ESMP 2 is a discussion item pertaining to the Advanced Teacher Roles. Dr. Tomberlin presented this item. Has to do with a $2 million gift from the General Assembly. This came out of a session law, 2021-180. You can read about this Advanced Teaching Role Position or Opportunity, not Position, but an Opportunity, it's part of GS 115C-113. It is a good law. It removes the eligibility caps. At one point, there was a cap in terms of the number of LEAs that can apply for the grant, and it also removes the class size requirement. So we had to deal with the issue at hand for us, had to, dealt with what to do, how to appropriate the $2 million by June 30, 2022. I don't know whether that means spend it or have a plan for spending it, and I want to think the latter. Really good options. Dr. Tomberlin and his group put a lot of thought to what to do with the $2 million. So we have a funding option for the 2020 cohort. All of this board members, you can find in your, in the PowerPoint for this particular item. So we have an option for the 2020 cohort, Advanced Teaching Role Cohort. We have a funding option for the 2021-22 recipients. I think we have four recipients, current recipients. So we have Option 1 for that, the use of the monies there. And we also have, we had, well, we had a couple of options, but I'm only focusing on the preferred option. And we also have, we have a funding option, one, what to do with the $2 million for 2022 and '23 fiscal year. So good work, Dr. Tomberlin and your team. Good work to everyone who contributed to the ESMP agenda for January. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Oxendine. I'll now turn to Ms. Camnetz, Chair of the Student Learning and Achievement Committee, for that report. Ms. Camnetz?
Thank you, Chair Davis. I shared the work of this committee with my colleague, Dr. Olivia Oxendine. We had one action item this month. It is SLA 1, a report to the Joint Legislative Education Oversight Committee on Extension Learning Recovery and Enrichment Programs. This is a required report on these programs, which provided an extra 150 hours or 30 days of instruction in every LEA. Last month, we had a look at the categories of data being collected. This final version of the report includes the actual data. Nearly 248,000 students were enrolled, 86% of whom were classified as at risk. 100% of districts offered remediation and learning recovery activities, with 47% of them also offering acceleration, along with several other kinds of activities. And it wasn't just academic work, many different types of enrichment activities were available for students as well. High school students across the state recovered 12,369 course credits. Pre and post-assessments in grades K-8 showed significant gains in reading and math. These were very positive results for students that helped prepare them for learning in this academic year. We closed the SLA presentation with a hearing from Bertie County, and their leadership gave us a firsthand look at their programming and their successes during their summer program. We have three discussion items. The first one is SLA 2, the Every Student Succeeds Act Update. Dr. Howard walked us through this. While testing waivers will not be available from the U.S. Department of Education this academic year, as they have been in the past two, there are still some COVID bumps in the road as far as our responsibility to use the available data. Broadly, this includes the 95% testing requirement, identification, and release of comprehensive improvement schools and targeted support in improvement schools, adjustments to interim targets in decreasing the achievement gap, and a couple of technical corrections. Following recent guidance from the Department of Education, Dr. Howard walked us through the problems and the possible addendum or amendment requests that might be necessary to address them. Staff will use January to get feedback from the field and bring their recommendations to the board in February for further discussion, aiming for a March vote on the recommendations. SLA 3 is the North Carolina Standard Course of Study Internal Procedures Manual. We got our first look at this manual last month. It provides guidance on the process for developing or revising a section of the standard course of study, the topics, categories, and supporting materials to be included, and the considerations that must be made as standards are reviewed, revised, and implemented. This manual will be followed by a document that provides external guidance for PSUs in the process of adopting revised standards. Finally, SLA 4 is K-12 Revised Extended Content Standards in Social Studies. Each time we revise a set of content standards, the Exceptional Children Division is required to align the extended content standards with them. This is the required alignment with the social studies standards we approved in February of this year. These standards apply only to our students with the most significant cognitive disabilities, or 1% of our students with disabilities population. They were developed by educators who understand the needs of this small group of students. The EC Division trained review and writing teams for K-2, 3-5, middle school, and the three required high school courses. Drafts were disseminated across the state for two separate periods of public comment, revisions were made, and the final version for each grade level and high school course came to the board for discussion. We also heard words of support from the EC Program Facilitators in Hoke and Chatham County. These changes, when approved, will be effective for students entering ninth grade in 2022-23. Finally, we have three consent items. SLA 5 is Consent for Release of Information to the Residential Schools for the Deaf and Blind Reporting. North Carolina public schools must provide a consent for release of information form to parents, guardians, and custodians of students identified with these disabilities. The consent authorizes the release of the information to the directors of our residential schools as part of their outreach to assure that guardians are aware of the services they provide. SLA 6 is the Read to Achieve Charter Technical Correction. This includes a name change from the Iowa Tested Basics Skills to Iowa Assessments and a restatement of the score so that it is more understandable. And finally, SLA 7, a report to the Joint Legislative Education Oversight Committee, Third Grade Read to Achieve 2021 Teacher Bonus Report. And basically, the report indicates that there were no bonuses awarded in that academic year. And that is the conclusion of my committee report.
Thank you, Ms. Camnetz. And I'll turn to Ms. White for the reports from the Education Innovation and Charter Schools and School Turnaround Committees. Ms. White?
Thank you, Chair Davis. Good morning, everyone. I'm Amy White, and Jill Camnetz and I provide the leadership of the Education Innovation and Charter School Committee. It's with a heavy heart this morning that I bring to you the recommendation for action on First Read for Three Rivers Academy. When the Charter School Advisory Board, which is comprised of an amazing group of volunteers who are committed to charter school leadership across our state, these folks willingly give their time to provide expertise and guidance on both policy and practice for charter schools in the state of North Carolina. When a recommendation comes from the Charter School Advisory Board to the State Board of Education, we take it very seriously. When funds are given from the Department of Public Instruction and passed into the hands of any charter school across our state, there is an expectation that those funds are used with fidelity and integrity for the use of innovation. Today, we have before us a recommendation for the Charter School Advisory Board for the termination of the charter for Three Rivers Academy. I'd like for it to be included in the record that the Charter School Advisory Board recommends to the State Board of Education termination of Three Rivers Academy charter based on the school's failure to meet standards of student performance demonstrated by its performance data, failure to meet generally accepted standards of fiscal management, for example, its failure to provide financial records and audits as required by law, violations of federal and state law, including special education law, violations of the provisions set forth in its charter, for example, failure to provide requested information in a timely manner, and other good cause shown, including the failure of the governing board to provide required oversight and accountability of the school's EMO. For these reasons and for information provided both in this meeting and also in closed session, it will be the recommendation of this committee that the State Board of Education terminate the charter for Three Rivers Academy. To add that, add to the weightiness of the issues that have been facing the Education Innovation and Charter School Committee, I would like to now move to the discussion of Torchlight Academy. Torchlight Academy is a charter school located in Wake County, serving grades K through 8. At the December 7, 2021 meeting, the Charter School Advisory Board found substantial evidence of charter agreement violations related to the administration of Torchlight's Exceptional Children Program. Because of the severity of Torchlight's conduct, the board in its December meeting placed Torchlight Academy on Level 3 noncompliance. At that time, Torchlight was given 30 days to respond to a number of different identified areas of misconduct. That information was received yesterday morning at 9:00. A number of different attachments can be found on the Eboard item under EICS 2. The State Board of Education found that Torchlight Academy has failed to remedy its identified deficiency in the delivery of special education services by the State Board's deadline of 9:00 a.m. yesterday morning, Wednesday, January the 5. And this matter is going to be remanded to the Charter Schools Advisory Board for further investigation of possible misuse or misappropriation for personal use of federal and state funds, including grant funds, governance concern specifically regarding potential lack of oversight by the Torchlight Academy Board of Directors or the use of funds and the provision of services to students, potential conflicts of interest generated by Mr. McQueen and/or Dr. Cynthia McQueen acting both on behalf or in lieu of the Board of Directors Torchlight Academy and the Torchlight Educational Management Organization in ways that benefited them personally. And further, that we make a, that they make a recommendation to the State Board of Education as to whether Torchlight Academy's charter should be revoked or other sanctions imposed in light of the documented deficiencies in the provision of special education services and other evidence presented. And further, that the disbursements of all federal funds under the control of Mr. McQueen and all schools operated by Torchlight Academy Schools LLC be temporarily frozen during the ongoing investigation and proceedings regarding those schools, and that state funds continue to be allocated on a monthly basis. In summary, from the board's perspective, we know that it is incumbent upon us as decision-makers to follow policy and procedure. It's important to note that Torchlight Academy's original charter was granted in 1999, and a 10-year charter was granted in 2014. Since 2014, significant changes have been made in both policy and statute, but this board feels like it is necessary for us to follow the process and the procedure of the charter as written in 2014, and that is the reason that we are not making a decision today. And we are asking that CSAB allow Torchlight the opportunity to respond to the issues at hand, and that CSAB make the recommendation back to the State Board of Education.
Ms. White?
Chair Davis.
Excuse me for interrupting, but just to make one slight tweak to your comments, is on December 16, we gave them 10 days up until January 5 to respond, not 30 days.
You are correct.
Just to clarify the right.
You are correct. They were in Level 3 noncompliance, and they were given until January the 5 at 9:00 a.m. in the morning, and that was a 10-day due diligence process.
Thank you, ma'am.
Excuse me for misspeaking. Continuing on our report, EICS 3 is the 2021 Charter School Application Acceleration Recommendations. Three schools have been recommended for acceleration during this time period. Those three schools are Movement School Southwest, Revitalized Charter School, and Oak Hill Charter. Elaine Riddick was another school that also applied for the application acceleration process, but the CSAB is not recommending that we approve that recommendation. So the three schools are Movement School, Revitalized Charter, and Oak Hill Charter. EICS 4 is Phoenix Academy's request to partner with a new educational management organization. Yesterday, Mr. Machado brought forth information that Paul and Kimberly Norcross, the founders of Seven Degrees of Change Foundation, are retiring. And because of that retirement, they will no longer be the EMO at Phoenix Academy. The Norcrosses has given considerable, to quote Mr. Machado, the use of the word pioneer was used to exemplify the work that's been done with the Norcrosses for innovation and advocacy for school choice by the Norcrosses for the charter school movement in the state of North Carolina. They are retiring. They were involved in the process to select a new They were involved in the process to select a new EMO for that school, and that recommendation is before us today. EICS five is an Aspire Trade High School request for a second year delay. All things COVID and supply chain and demand and facility have caused this school to enter into a two-year delay. We heard yesterday from Mr. Machado that there is a construction has begun, and they will be on a very fast track to get the school ready, open at its time period, but they are moving well towards that progress, so the recommendation is that we approve the request for the second year delay. We had one discussion item. That item was the 2022 Charter School Enrollment and Expansion Requests. We had three schools recommended for the enrollment expansion request, and that is Cardinal Charter, Kip Durham, and Telra Institute. There was a fourth school that made a recommendation, and that was United Community Charter. They were trying to expand to charter school, but that request is not being moved forward. This was a discussion item. You'll have an opportunity to ask any questions that you might need, but the three schools, again, are Cardinal Charter, Kip Durham, and Telra. Today, we have three items on our consent agenda. EICS seven is Next Generation Academy's request to implement a weighted lottery. EICS eight is the Franklin School of Innovations' request to implement a weighted lottery. And EICS nine is the report to the Joint Legislative Education Oversight Committee on the Innovative School District. That report was given to us last month, and we'll move to them upon our approval. Mr. Chair, with your approval, it would be okay if I go ahead and give the report on the School Turnaround Committee report?
Please.
So, Mr. James Ford and I have the pleasure of working together on school turnaround, and yesterday, we had an amazing presentation. I mentioned that we've limped along and done virtual presentations. It was so refreshing to have two experts in the field join us from Union County. Yesterday, Dr. Andrew Houlihan, the superintendent, and Dr. Elaniel Daniels at Walker Bicket Elementary came to share their good work using restart practices and an overall just significant, amazing change because of the flexibilities offered by the restart program in the state of North Carolina. Ms. Julie Garver gave an incredible oversight of data from the five schools in the Union County that are part of the restart program, plus one, which is one of their focus schools, and it was tremendous for board members to have the opportunity to ask questions and hear firsthand from them voices and boots in the field for the good work that's being done from strong turnaround practices. And, Mr. Chair, that concludes our reports.
Thank you, Ms. White. I now turn to Mr. Reginald Keenan, Chair of the Healthy Responsible Students Committee. Mr. Keenan?
Good morning, everyone. Mr. Chair, along with Alan Becken and myself, we chair the HRS Committee. Yesterday's discussion, we had a real great presentation by Ms. Angel Goodwin Vats and also Ms. Beth Rice, which, again, they gave a very informative presentation. On our agenda today, we have one discussion item, and then we have a consent item. That consent item will be for us to receive the Healthy Active Children Policy Report. But as you know, after the opening of my third work session, the MTSS team came up with four recommendations for us to consider. And no doubt, the recommendations are in line with our strategic plan, also with our whole child model, and also supports Operation Polaris. And if I may, I'd very quickly like to read the full recommendation that was discussed and for us to consider and discuss further if necessary. The first one was to use MTSS as a school improvement framework to organize existing and new social and emotional learning and school mental health efforts. Second one was to continue to communicate State Board of Education commitment to social and emotional learning as a level for academic success and education equity. The third one was support specialized instruction, support personnel, team instructors, and staffing at the state level, including the state-level school counselor, school nurse, school psychologist, school social worker, school mental health consultant, and school safety coordinator. And the last one was accessible funding for the North Carolina Social and Emotional Learning Implementation. Again, I think it was a great, great recommendation, and that concludes the presentation for HR Committee. Other than, again, the consent agenda, we will deal with the Active Children Policy Report. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Keenan. And now recognize Vice Chair Duncan for the Business Operations Committee report. Vice Chair Duncan.
Thank you, Chair Davis. Biz Op Committee is led by myself and by Todd Chastain, and we reported on several items this month. For action on first reading, we have Biz Op one through seven, but we're going to defer for additional study Biz Op five through consensus of the board to get some additional information to better prepare us with respect to that policy. So, starting then at Biz Op one, approval of contracts over $500,000. We had two contracts that were brought before us. The first one was presented by Dan Trow, and that involves a contract with Frank Porter Graham Group that focuses on necessarily, necessary, excuse me, early childhood learning work. Specifically, it comes from state set-aside funds from the federal ISEA Special Education Preschool Grants, which will be allocated to continue collaboration to accomplish the early childhood projects in the Exceptional Children's Systemic Improvement Plan and to meet the Office of Special Education Program requirements in the annual performance report. That is the purpose of the contract. It is a four-year contract. Second contract that we have under Biz Op one was presented by Dr. Tom Tomlin and by Dr. Mark Sandberg, which is a technology-related project to assist in the efficiencies of the execution of the duties of Dr. Tomlin's office. Those are our two items in Biz Op one. In Biz Op two, we begin a series, well, we begin for this meeting. We have had several of these in the past, and will continue to have several in light of all the federal funding and our state budget that creates a number of requirements for policy amendments. Biz Op two was presented by Alexis Shousen as a policy amendment with respect to state allotment policy on several items. Those items include updates to the allotment policy for charter schools, which would assist in providing funding for permanent charter school transportation grant program, addition of an allotment policy for the small county and low wealth signing bonus for teachers. That's PRC 062. The addition of an allotment policy for the Transportation Reserve Fund for homeless and foster children, which can be found in PRC 081. Updates to the allotment policy for school resource officers, which is in PRC 039. Addition of an allotment policy for the Feminine Hygiene Product Grant Program, which is PRC 088. This is a new program that was created by the legislature in this past session. Addition of an allotment policy for supplemental funds for teacher compensation, which is PRC 071. This is the $100 million employee additional compensation that was passed by the legislature. And updates to the allotment policy for advanced teaching roles pursuant to legislation that was passed during this past session. Ms. Shousen covered all of those items and what the subject matter of the revisions would be during the course of our meeting yesterday. We now move to Biz Op three, which is, again, a policy amendment from the American Rescue Plan, and this involves state fiscal recovery funding. And there are three primary items under this one, which was presented by John Kiefer. First one is PRC 140, which is to set out the allotment policy for School Bus Safety Pilot Program, which is for designated LEAs, and totals $18,148,000. Second one is a PRC 142 for Crosby Scholars for three designated counties, a total amount of $500,000. And finally, the last one is PRC 141, which was initially approved by the State Board at our special meeting on December 16th. What has been presented now is a modification with respect to this policy. The modification requires all public school units apply the State Board of Education definition for employment status for the purpose of eligibility of the bonus. This is to help clarify the policy that was set out by the state and to hopefully provide further ease and efficiency of administration. Biz Op four, our next item, again, is a series of amendments to our allotment policies. The first one is cyber bullying and suicide prevention grants, which is PRC 192. And the purpose is to allow for allotment of funding to public school units to be used for technology to assist in mitigating cyberbullying issues, to monitor student internet activity, and to monitor classroom educational devices, all in addition to assisting with suicide prevention services by contracting with a third-party vendor. The total allotment that was provided was $16 million. Will be distributed pursuant to that new amendment. The second issue, the second grant authorized by the legislation for which we'll go to PRC 193 is what's called gaggle grants for the purpose of contracting with Gaggle Net, Inc., for technology to mitigate cyberbullying, monitor student internet activity, and assist with suicide prevention services. So, these first two are aligned with one another. For driver training, PRC 205, there's $400,000 that's been allotted for funds to support driver education programs, in particular to aid in reducing the backlog of student applicants waiting for the services, which was created by the COVID-19 pandemic. The next item is PRC 202, which is COVID-19 Student Enrollment Increase Funding, which is to provide additional allotments for public school units to account for additional students enrolled during the 2020, 2021 school year. As we all know, there was not a normal year, and there were additional students enrolling throughout the course of the year. The intent of this statute is to get to a level out, if you will, to a count as opposed to the normal first 20-day of school year count, to normalize the account and take into account the fact that there were students coming into the school throughout the course of the year. Finally, PRC 203 is for teacher bonuses. This is the $100 million employee bonuses. This is the allotment policy to be used for that. The earlier $100 million bonus covered by Ms. Shousen was focused on supplement. This is focused on taking clear the provisions for employee bonuses, insisting with the use of these funds. Biz Op six, moving forwards, the digital learning grants. There was a request for proposals that was presented by Dr. Ashton McBride and Ms. Lindsay Seif, who gave us the outline of what this program is intended to accomplish and gave us the process for how we are to proceed. I think we all noted with some agreement that they had particularly taken some thought into providing webinars for districts to help with districts that don't necessarily have a grant writer or don't necessarily have a large staff to assist them in trying to be able to prepare grants so that we have counties that very much could benefit from these, would benefit from the webinar and be able to facilitate, if you will, their applications for these grants. We appreciate that continued work. Biz Op seven is proposed amendments to the American Rescue Plan for submission to the U.S. Department of Education. You recall, this is a continuing process. We have earlier provided our American Rescue Plan for submission to the Department of Education, but it's acknowledged that it is a document that can be amended and modified based on circumstances. Certainly, there are some circumstances that have continued us to make this a document that is alive and dynamic, and there have been some modifications made, and it was approved by the board yesterday with respect to those modifications that were made to the original plan that has been set. It will not be shocking if we have some additional amendments as we go forward, but we are making good progress on the work that we're doing. So, next, we reviewed executed contracts report and the planned contracts report, which were available to all. We did not have any questions this month. Then we had three update items. The first was the monthly budget report, and you'll recall, this is in a series of reports to help educate the board in the nuances and subtleties of some of the specific items, and we're pulling some of these items out that are very important items to review those on a monthly basis. And this week's, excuse me, this month's subject was the Read-to-Achieve budget. We looked at it both from the standpoint of the money that's being allotted, for example, to the letters program and how that's being allotted to the districts and otherwise. Also looked at the amount of money that's in the budget with respect to our department and the resources that are being used to support this incredibly important initiative for enhancing reading ability of our youngest students. And we went through that, and I thought in an informative way that was helpful to understand where the money's going and how it's being used. We then had an implementation report. Again, this has become something that's important to the board, I think, to hear as we go forward with all this federal funding that we're receiving. How is it being used based on the votes that we've made with respect to usage of funds and what progress can be reported? That is, what benefits are we seeing or starting to see from use of these funds? Because we can't possibly cover all of these in one meeting without it being an extremely long presentation, but we are also breaking those up into smaller pieces. And for this meeting, Dr. Mar and Dr. Townsend made the introduction, and then Dr. Ren provided a background on several technology initiatives that come from these federal funds and provided for us the report as to where the funds came for some of these initiatives and exactly what's being done, and some of the promising work that's being done, including working on getting connectivity, if you will, to some parts of our state where students simply don't have it. They may have a device, but they don't have connectivity. That was among several things she reported on. Dr. Harvey reported on school nutrition and the use of the federal funding there. A very compelling report in terms of how we're able to reach out and make a real difference for districts and, more importantly, for our children and families in making sure they continue to receive nutritious meals during the course of the last month, year, and nine months now with the pandemic. And finally, Dr. Stegall gave us a presentation on the work that's being done on the portrait of a graduate. You'll call the portrait of a graduate is something that was an important part of Project Polaris that has been presented by our superintendent, and one of the things that we want to have is a very clear portrait of what we want for outcomes for our students. And so, Dr. Stegall reported on what's been done so far and what continues to be done as this develops to provide important information for the board later this year as we're looking at outcomes and examining the strategies that are working in order to achieve those outcomes. Finally, last thing, was an agency vacancy report. It was given by Ryan Paxton, where he reviewed basically the last year, what has occurred since Superintendent Truitt has come on, some of the repurposing that's gone on, some of the new positions that have been filled, and the continuing work that's going on to fill the positions that are still vacant. So, I believe that now concludes the report. Chair Davis, thank you for the time.
Thank you, Vice Chair Duncan. Board members, this concludes our committee reports, and just to add on to Vice Chair Duncan's comments about this unique opportunity we have, given the significant amount of funding that we have now at our disposal, we look forward in future meetings to continuing to hear updates on the actions we're taking to improve the academic performance of our students, since that is our paramount objective, and how effectively we're using these funds to drive us towards that goal. We also look forward to receiving future meetings, updates.
Chair Davis?
Yes, Chair?
Thank you. Just very quickly, I appreciate your comments regarding that, and I would hope that anyone who's listening, who either is on a committee or has the responsibility for operationalizing the use of this money, that you'll give some thought to the ability to alter it. There will be a time, I have a great relationship with the state altar, but I never speak for her, but there will be a time when all of this money that's coming through DPI or through the state of North Carolina is going to need to be looked at. And anything that any of the operation folks can do to line things up
And anything that any of the operation folks can do to line things up so that things are easily auditable by the state, Office of State Auditor, I think would be time and thought well spent. Thank you.
Thank you, Treasurer. Completely agree with your comments. Ensuring compliance with the law and use of these funds is an important objective, second only to perhaps ensuring that these funds drive the necessary performance improvement in our students that they deserve. So, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Board members, that concludes our agenda. Are there any items of new business to discuss? Hearing none, we'll now vote on any item requiring action from your committee reports. A thorough discussion and report was provided on each item, including any respective consent items. I remind us that any item on consent is primarily not complex and may have come to the board for discussion in a prior month, and I know also that board members have seen these consent agenda items for at least a week. At this time, I ask if there's a request to remove any item from the consent, action, or action on first reading agendas. Ms. White.
Thank you, Chair Davis. I would like to request that, under BizOp 1, approval of contracts over $500,000, that task order NC 10106745, dealing with the contract between UNC Chapel Hill and Frank Porter Graham Child Development Center, be separated out for a separate vote.
Okay, we will make that accommodation. Any other items requested to be removed and voted on separately?
Mr. Chair.
It's Treasurer.
Thank you. If someone would just email me, and I probably already have it in my stack, PRC 142, any information about the Crosby Scholars, there's a big concentration of Crosby Scholars in the Winston-Salem Salisbury area, and I'd just like to communicate that with folks who have been advocating for that program for some period of time.
Be glad to send that to you. Thank you, Treasurer.
Chair Davis?
Yes.
If this will help, I'm going by memory, I can look it up, but I believe Forsyth County is one of the three designated counties to receive funding for the Crosby Scholars, and I believe the amount for Forsyth County was $250,000.
Yeah. I just want to get something, whatever's associated with 142, somebody could just send me an email with that description. That'd be incredibly helpful. Thank you so much.
Will do. Hearing no other requests, I now seek a motion to approve the following. The December 1st and 2nd, 2021 meeting minutes, the December 16th, 2021 called meeting minutes, and the following items from your committee reports. SLA 1 and 5 through 7, EICS 1 through 5 and 7 through 9, HRS 2, BizOp 1, consisting of just the amendment to the TEACH NC contract, BizOps 2, 3, 4, 6, and 7, ESNP 1, the SR2 budget as presented yesterday by Ms. Schaus, the IPL and ILT licensure approval recommendations, the residential school and ISD hire recommendations, presented in closed session, and changes to the Strong Schools Toolkit as presented in today's meeting. Is there a motion to that effect?
Is that moved?
Motion by Ms. Camnitz. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hall. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Dr. Townsend Smith, we call the roll to capture the vote.
Yes, sir. Dr. Oxendine?
Yes.
Ms. Camnitz?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Dr. Tipton Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Treasurer Falwell?
Yes.
Lieutenant Governor?
Yes.
Vice Chair Duncan?
Yes.
Chair Davis?
Yes. Motion carries. We'll now proceed to voting on the Early Childhood Learning Task Order 10106745 with the UNC Chapel Hill Frank Porter Graham Child Development Center, as presented yesterday under BizOp 1. Is there a motion to approve that item?
Is that moved?
Motion by Ms. Camnitz. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Ford.
Second by Mr. Ford. Any discussion on this item? Hearing none. Dr. Townsend Smith, we call the roll to capture the vote.
Yes, sir. Dr. Oxendine?
No.
Ms. Camnitz?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Dr. Tipton Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. White?
No.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Treasurer Falwell?
No.
Lieutenant Governor?
No.
Vice Chair Duncan?
Yes.
Chair Davis?
Motion carries seven to four. Colleagues, that concludes our action items for this meeting. I want to thank everyone who participated and worked in preparing and executing this successful meeting. I look forward to working with everyone in 2022 with many challenges ahead of us, and I'd say opportunities. We have the talent to achieve what our students need, so I look forward to working together with you and this successful team. I now ask for a motion to adjourn this January 6, 2022 meeting.
Hello. Mr. Keenan?
Motion by Mr. Keenan. Is there a second?
Second, my Treasurer Falwell.
Second by the Treasurer. Dr. Townsend Smith.
Yes, sir. Dr. Oxendine?
Yes.
Ms. Camnitz?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Dr. Tipton Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Treasurer Falwell?
Yes.
Lieutenant Governor?
Yes.
Vice Chair Duncan?
Yes.
Chair Davis?
Yes. Motion carries. We stand adjourned.